municipal city council meeting. Ooh, okay, don't drop anything. If you would, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could just take a moment and silence their cell phones. All right. This evening, we do not have any proclamations. I don't remember the last time that happened, so that's first. We have, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. There's one added item to the consent agenda, which is a motion to allow me to attend the next meeting by telephone, because I will be in Michigan. So that's the only addition. Are there any other questions, comments, anything on the consent agenda you would like considered separately? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, ask amended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Yes? Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor, Timothy Sadler. I had a question on letter I with the Nature Center. And I was just curious what, like, the new agreement is. I mean, is it still public, or is it going to be private now, or?
Say your question again.
What's your question?
Is it about being a public?
The Nature Center?
Thing, or is it gonna, is it now private?
No, it's the same relationship as in the past. It's just renegotiating some numbers. But, so the Nature Center supports, I mean, Friends of the Nature Center supports the operations of Nature Center, sort of as a fundraising arm.
Okay. Do we get any new, like, animals, or lizards, or?
We just got new animals. We got, we got our red pandas. I don't know how many new animals.
That is awesome.
What do you want, though? I mean, come on.
I just wanted to make sure it's still public.
No, no.
Thanks, guys.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, if not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. On the next item, we don't have any presentations and reports. We have one public hearing. It's a public hearing to solicit comments for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act Funds Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2019-2020. And Paul D'Angelo is here, yeah. It's like, where are you all? He's here to talk to us about this item.
Hi, good evening. Mayor, City Council, City Management. We're here just to talk about the annual plan tonight, and specifically authorization from the City Manager to submit the 2019-20 consolidated action plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funding Programs from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and sign all the necessary documents for implementation. This year, we thought it would be good to just put together a little presentation on how these funding, this funding will be spent in the next year with our community partners. So as most of you probably know, the action plan is a summary of actions and activities in specific federal and nonfederal resources that will be used each year to address the priority needs in the city's consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is designed to assess affordable housing and community development needs, and to make data-driven, place-based investment decisions. The plan serves as a framework for our community-wide dialogue to identify housing and community development priorities, and it's updated every five years. Those priorities, the high priorities in our last consolidated plan involved housing, economic development, and public services. So when it comes to housing, looking for new rental housing for households at 60% AMI or less, also for special needs housing. When it comes to economic development, we're talking creating sustainable jobs for low-income persons, job training and placement. And for public services, services that support affordable housing and jobs and homelessness. And with the funding sources, we use the CDBG and home funding. For CDBG, it's funding that helps develop and uplift communities to provide decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low-to-modern income persons. Home funding is very similar, but it supports a variety of housing activities according to local housing needs. Eligible uses include tenant-based rental assistance, housing rehab, assistance to home buyers, and construction of new housing, again, for our HUD funding. We wanted to showcase some of our partners this year that came out of the awards process for our HUD funding, a variety of our great community partners, Homeward Bound, OnTrack, YWCA, Asheville Habitat for Humanity, Green Opportunities. And that's how the funding broke down for the CDBG funding. And when it comes to home funding, again, specifically for that affordable housing component, Homeward Bound, Housing Assistance Corporation, Workforce Homestead. And the home funding is for our four-county region, so that includes Henderson County, Buncombe County, Madison County, and Transylvania County. And those were supported for potential tax credit developments that we'll find out in August of this year if they're supported. So with a little luck in our action plan and working with our partners, and if everything's able to move forward, we would be able to report next year with this funding that we've assisted 23 households with rental assistance. We've produced, or are in the process of producing, 284 affordable units. We've rehabbed 22 existing units. When it comes to economic development, it's created or retained 161 jobs, assisted 196 businesses, and also prevented 250 individuals from homelessness. And we always think it's important, too, to talk about the leveraging of the dollars. So when our applications come in for CDBG and home funding, it also comes in with the other funding that they're bringing in throughout the community of Buncombe County, other nonprofits, foundation, Monate Bank loans, et cetera. And it shows how this funding can be leveraged. So for home funding, it's a 16:1 leverage, mostly because that's a lot of tax credits and the Housing Finance Agency and the money they get there. And for our CDBG funding, which is specifically for City of Asheville, it's leveraged at a greater 5:1 rate. And happy to answer any questions. Fun fact, the annual plan is due at midnight tonight. And so that is not a community development issue. It just happened to fall in a strange time, that the public hearing happened the same date. So it works out. But a big thanks to our community development team, who really helped put this action plan together this year.
All right, any questions before we open the public hearing?
No questions, just want to, as always, say thanks to you and the staff for all the hard work that goes into reviewing those applications and preparing us to review them and make decisions. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the public hearing, when, just raise your hand and let me know you want to speak. You'll have three minutes. Watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange means you're getting close to the end, red means stop. And you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Yes.
I need to all of you. I spoke at the last meeting in favor of including an urban forester on city staff.
Well, number one, you can say your name, but number two, we're on this one item about home funds.
Oh, I thought I was supposed to come talk for the public hearing, I'm sorry. I'll go back.
All right. Is there anyone who wants to speak on the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act Funds Annual Action Plan? Yes, sir.
All right, guys. Well, Timothy Sadler still. And I was just wondering if there's any units for homeless, like, that are included in the grant?
Paul, I don't know if you want to put the slide back up. Paul, I don't know if you want to put the slide back up that shows the recipients of the grant funding, so you can see the nonprofit entities that are receiving the funds. There. And specifically, those partners that are working on the issue of homelessness? Is that where you're, you're?
Yeah, well, I was wondering, like, how many, how many units are dedicated for people that are homeless? Or if that's, like, a thing, or?
So this isn't, this is, this is not specific housing units, this money? Maybe Paul can talk about that.
Home is more focused on housing, but, yeah.
So they're, right.
So when it comes to the funding, the CDBG tends to support the housing, to uplift with decent housing, with living environment. But when we're talking actual units, you're looking at home funding mostly. And so there's some possibilities here. Not only that the tax credit folks might use some of the vouchers for homeless individuals, but also Homeward Bound is looking with their rehabbing 11 units on Short Michigan, and then their diversion program's a little bit more about tenant-based rental assistance.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to comment on this item? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
I'm happy to make a, oh, sorry, go ahead. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendations on CDBG and home for the annual action plan.
And I need a second.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We have a few items under unfinished business, and Paul, you're back up. Under a resolution approving the recommendations for the fiscal year 2019-2020 Strategic Partnership Fund Grants. Folks, as we get into this part of the agenda, and I don't know who all has brought a copy of the agenda in with them, there will be a vote and an opportunity to speak on a motion concerning this item A, Strategic Partnership Funds Grants. And, but item B, which is the budget item, that we had public comment on that last meeting, so there's no public comment on item B. But then when we get into item C, like, once again, public comment is welcome. So item A, Strategic Partnership Funds Grants.
Thanks, and good evening again. Paul D'Angelo with Community and Economic Development, talking about the Strategic Partnership Funds, and here recommending, asking for the recommendation for approval and adoption of our 2019-2020 Strategic Partnership Fund Grants. As you know, the SPF Funds, Strategic Partnership Funds, are funded in part by the city through taxpayers. These programs support underserved populations and provide resources through an equity-based community development initiative, and with priority given to applications that further Asheville City Council's Vision 2036, including things here like achievement gaps, addressing disparities, direct services for homeless, and, or, excuse me, housing and employment, economic mobility, food security, and small business support. This year, we received 31 applications for SPF funding, for a total of $234,500. We actually funded 27 of those applications in the process a few months back. And again, the total recommended funding for Strategic Partnership Fund Grants and capacity building set aside is $242,000. We recommended, in your staff report, the 27 agencies and the amount of money that they would be receiving from the SPF Funds. And for some of the pros for this, the approval of the funds, operating support to Asheville-based organizations that are providing direct assistance to Asheville residents, and the SPF Funds reflect the recommendations of the city's Housing and Community Development Committee. So we wanted to place that for you for the budget consideration as well.
Okay. Any questions of Paul?
Can I just note something? So, and Keith and Shanika may want to weigh in on this, too. So we had, as Paul said, we had 40?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one applications. The amounts requested there totaled over $700,000, as I recall.
Believe that's correct.
For a pot of $234,000. So as we did last year, we've asked, we've had some conversations among the committee and asked the staff to look at ways of tweaking that, this grant program to just see if it can, well, there are a number of objectives that we might try to achieve. But I just want to, sort of, we're going to talk about this at our HCD committee meeting next week, but I want to invite all of the groups that have applied in the past and have received these funds to please be a part of this conversation. We really need your help in trying to make this process less competitive, more impactful. And there are lots of things that we might be able to do to do that. And I personally would like this to be the kind of conversation where we're solving this problem together, instead of, sort of, us saying, this is the way it's going to be. So just sort of put your, put your collaboration hat on to help us solve this problem.
And that HCD meeting is next Tuesday, June 18th, 10 to 12, on the first floor.
Yep, thank you.
And I'd like to thank the HCD committee for working on this. I know this meeting, when you do it, is really long. I don't know how long it was this year, but it was many hours.
And emotional, so.
Yeah.
Long and hard. It's hard.
Okay, so on this one, I'll need a motion, and then if there's anyone wishing to comment, I will hear public comment.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2019-20 strategic, 2019 to 2020 Strategic Partnership Fund Grants as outlined in the staff report.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to adopt the Strategic Partnership Fund Grants for 2019-2020? Okay, all right, back here. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, now the ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual operating budget, and our City Manager, Deborah Campbell, will kick us off here.
So I appreciate all the work that has gone into this effort. Tonight, we are, hopefully, hopefully, we will get adoption of the budget. It has been a long process. We started sometime in August and are ending up in June with what I hope is a budget that addresses the priorities that you all identified as part of your retreat. And there are a couple of things, though, that I would like to touch on if I could, because we got a lot of responses and issues raised by the community in terms of other things that they wish that we had the funding to address. So I'll address these separately. The first one is the urban forester and the position, as well as the master plan. What we are going to do with that is, in terms of funding, we are suggesting that there is no additional funding that will be needed at this time. We are asking, though, an interdepartmental team between the Planning Department, Development Services Department, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and our Sustainability Group to come together, work with the Tree Commission, and looking at the regulatory tools that we have as it relates to tree preservation and conservation. We really think that we are really, really shorthanded from a regulatory perspective as it relates to regulating tree removal and tree save on private property. So over the next several months, we're going to be working with the Tree Commission and trying to address the regulatory issues, and then we will see if there are needs for additional staff resources. Right now, we feel that particularly with the tools that we have now, that we have adequate staff in Public Works, as well as in Development Services, to look at this issue. If we add additional regulatory authority and opportunities, we'll certainly look at whether we have the resources to address it from that perspective. The third item are, the second item, is support for the Minority Business Program Manager. We have looked at our needs for an additional staff fairly thoroughly. And what we have concluded is that we don't feel like we need a staff person at this time. There is $60,000 proposed in the budget to hire a consultant to help us actually train, recruit, build the capacity of minority vendors. Our issue is not having enough staff. Our issue is having enough vendors. And that's what we want to, want to work out in terms of outreach and, again, building capacity. The next item is the fully funding the first year of the Transit Master Plan. I've said this on numerous occasions, that I think transit is so integral in terms of a service that is needed in this community, and we obviously need to do what we can to expand those services. But what I would like to do is, and what I am recommending to council, is I would like to do what was proposed, the 1.2 million that is proposed to increase in terms of implementing the majority of the route reconfigurations and adding additional staff for us to absorb the new route reconfigurations. Come back in about six to seven months, in terms of looking at our progress, in terms of implementing the things that we think still are going to be challenging for us to do with our existing resources. If there are other opportunities to expand or do more, we will do more. But at this time, I don't know, and I, well, I feel fairly confident that we don't have the resources from a staff perspective. And our issue isn't just money, it is capacity. And we're not there yet. We hope to develop, build, grow a transit program in our community. But it is going to take time. And I've said this a number of times to council, is that my philosophy is going to be, I am not going to overpromise and underdeliver. That's what I do not want to do, particularly related to this program and the population that we're, that needs it, needs this service. And so I'm going to be very tactical, very strategic, and very, very intentional about building a transit program for our community. Lastly, I hope that you all will adopt this budget. We have spent a lot of time on it, we've had lots of discussions, and I will, I will stop there, and thank you.
Any questions, Deborah?
Actually, if I could just address one other item, and I apologize for doing this, Mayor. The salary adjustment of $31,200 as an annual salary, instead of looking at it as the, which is an equivalent to $15 an hour, that also will be a part of the accelerated comp and class study that we will reserve funding. But we want to look at it holistically to understand if there are any compression issues, as well as what it will cost for, for implementation. We will come back to you with that issue as well. So I apologize for not including it.
Any other, so this is an opportunity for any questions, clarifications, comments, or a motion? Or, any, and/or.
So Deborah, thanks for all that explanation. So inherently, the discussion you just had about what the staff is committing to do relative to all the various issues you just discussed, I mean, that, that is somewhat kind of baked into the annual budget?
That is correct.
I mean, so, okay, so, I mean, it's, it's not?
Nothing outside, no additional funding, no changes to the budget itself.
But the commitments that you made about?
That is correct.
The urban forester and things, and the salaries, et cetera. That's a commitment that's inherent in the budget when we approve or vote on this tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's. I would make a motion to adopt this budget.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment before we vote on the motion to adopt the budget?
I want to say just a quick word, and again, thank you for your attention to, on some of the issues that we've heard a lot about, particularly transit and the, and the urban forester. I know people are disappointed that we didn't get the forest plan or the forester, the plan or the person, but I, I actually think that what Deborah is doing, actually, what Deborah is proposing to do is exactly what the Tree Commission asked for last fall, which is an interdepartmental team to figure out how to strengthen our regulatory framework around this. And we just, with not having a city manager and having all sorts of people in interim positions, we really weren't in a position to commit to that. But now that everybody's in their spot, we, we can do that. And so we're going to do that. I actually think that's a great, it's a great next step to strengthen that framework. Tell us what we can do, what we can't do, sharpen the tools that we have, and get more tools in the toolbox. And that will, as Deborah said, set us up well to then figure out, how do we need to staff that? Once we know what we can do and how we're going to do it, then we'll know how we need to staff it. So really appreciate that effort. And then, again, on the transit, I know, I mean, everybody, I think, is disappointed that we can't do the full implementation, but again, I appreciate your willingness to commit to sort of looking mid-year and trying as best we can to start implementation, full implementation of the first year as soon as we can, whenever there is funding instability in the system. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I would just like to thank you for all the hard work you've put into this. And I think you brought us through a really good process this year, and staff working on this diligently and paying special attention to those particular issues that really bubbled to the surface. So, you know, I appreciate, I know it's been a lot of intense hard work, and it feels like it takes about a year to do it, so we'll get started soon on the next one. Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Gosh, after all that, it's kind of.
Thank you.
All right, so item C, 360 Hilliard Avenue. Paul, you are the man of the hour. You are back on, on deck. Like the mass legit exodus.
Okay, good evening again. Paul D'Angelo with the Community and Economic Development Department, here tonight to discuss the revised proposal for 360 Hilliard Avenue, specifically looking for support of the revised proposal from the Cassinger Development Group for the development of a mixed-income community at the city-owned property at 360 Hilliard Avenue. So just to orient everybody to this parcel, it's at the intersection of Hilliard and Klingman, next to Aston Park. And this, where the park maintenance building used to be. So a little background, in May of 2016, the city issued an RFQP for the development of affordable housing at city-owned property at 360 Hilliard Avenue. The city did receive two responses from Tribute Companies, as well as Cassinger Development Group. The City Council in September of 2016 approved the proposal from Tribute Companies. And in January of 2017, Tribute actually brought forward a revised proposal, but in March of that year backed out to cost development unknowns and lender financing. So in June of 2017, the Cassinger Group was re-engaged. The project started out as rental, but with increasing costs, an attempt was made to turn the project into a for-sale condo community. Difficulties with this model led to the new proposal that we're talking about today. So to take a look here, the developer experience with the Cassinger Development Group of some units that they built here in Asheville, as well as Arden, and another complex in Richmond, Virginia, that they're somewhat of a seasoned developer that has been in the community here in Asheville, and happy that they're bringing this proposal forward today. So to kind of walk this through a little bit, based on the previous proposals of what this looked like in June of 2017, November of 2018, and now we're here in May of 2019, kind of going along with the difficulty of this process with affordable housing, working with for-profit developers and utilizing our tools. But if you take a look at the proposal that we have now from Cassingers, it's a mixed-income rental community, a unit count of a total of 86 units, with 34 of those being affordable. 18 of those units will service families and individuals making 60% of the area median income, and 16 of those units will service individuals and families making 80% of the area median income. We're looking at an affordability term of approximately 50 years, city investment of 1.4 of the. grant, as well as a discounted land sale purchase price of $475,000. Couple additional details, the developer will construct public parking, portion of the Greenway, and the Greenway Trailhead. So this kind of spells it out outside of that matrix, again, looking at their proposal of the 86 with the 34 units, an expanded site, the land price, the Housing Trust Fund loan, the land use incentive grant, as well as the public parking that they'll install at the real tennis courts, and as well as the work with the trailhead that they'll be doing for the Branch Greenway. And if approved, KDG, Cassinger Development Group, is ready to begin construction this fall. So some of the pros in this deal, the city will gain 34 new affordable housing units under 80% of area median income. When you take a look at some of the income levels that will be, that will be renting here, and taking a look at it from an individual and family basis, incomes could range from $27,900 for a single person to $42,500 for a family of two. It kind of strikes, the city manager discussing $15 an hour, and where that annual pay comes in, it kind of fits right there as well. So to break that down into an hourly rate, when you're looking at the actual rental rates based on their income, you're looking at approximate affordable rental rate of $650 to $900 for a qualified individual or family at those income levels. And again, for another pro is an affordability period of 50 years, developer is ready to go. We're also very excited at the fact that, here's an example of where we're bringing in another type of developer, a for-profit developer, who's looking at our tools that we offer, like Housing Trust Fund and Land Use Incentive Grant, looking for a percentage of affordability, and making that work with the Cassinger Development Group. City's investment per affordable unit would be estimated with those tools there at $71,000 per unit. Most of you probably remember the work we did with LAS on the 319 Biltmore site, looking at the subsidy needed for a 60 to 80% unit, and that usually fell between $16,000 and $80,000. That kind of falls right in line at $71,000. We do always try to look, though, with the Housing Trust Fund being paid back, you could actually look at that level as being a little bit lower per unit. To get back to a little bit of the site plan, Cassinger proposes to purchase the area in blue, which is a total of about 1.75 acres. They'll improve the westernmost area with parking for the development, and there are public benefit improvements in this proposal. So not only work with the Branch Greenway Trailhead, but also doing work with the Greenway along the property line, and assisting with the public parking behind the tennis courts to help develop that. This is kind of a timeline, looking forward to where we've been, so we did go to Housing and Community Development on May 28th, here at city council today, design review in July, TRC in August, property acquisition in August, and closing in August, hopefully again with that start date in the fall to begin construction. And again, we kind of took a look back at some numbers, and the city of Asheville has a track record of working with nonprofit, mission-driven, and tax credit developers for affordable housing. So looking since 2015 of units that have actually been, received their certificate of occupants and been CO'd, we've done a lot of that work for affordable housing with the mission-driven nonprofit and tax credit developers, developing about 300 units, give or take, looking back at that history. This proposal builds the capacity within the community of for-profit developers and the production of affordable housing. And so in the past four years, there's been about 1,600, since 2015 beginning, about 1,600 market rate rental units. And working on these deals and seeing our proposals, seeing if we can work with the developers at 20% of the units, if 20% of these units were set aside as affordable, we'd have an additional 324, or, excuse me, 320 affordable units. And at the Community Development, we really see, moving forward, where we're working with the mission-driven developers, the tax credit developers, we're working with the folks and our partners who are doing that hardest work, tackling those, the lower AMIs and that difficult work. And we'd like, are looking forward to seeing more capacity building with the for-profit developers, seeing if we can up that to 20, 30, maybe even 40% of the units being affordable, and it'll get to that larger number of the affordable units that the community needs. And having 40% come in with the Cassingers, we feel is a very good proposal and are very excited to move forward. We do have a couple thank yous we wanted to mention, because if you can notice by the timeline, this has been a little process. And fun fact, I used to work at Tribute, since I have a lot of those tonight from back in the day, but Deborah, Kathy, and Sam for their guidance on this proposal, the Community Development Team, specifically Andrew Mayron, who works a lot with his expertise and relationship with the Cassinger Group, working with a partnership and with real estate with Nikki Reed, hand-in-hand, it's been vital, and then at the Cassingers as well for still staying at the table after a few years, and grateful with working with us and our team through, you know, what is a difficult process, but very happy to be here tonight with this proposal.
Thank you.
And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yep. Paul, in terms of, you noted when Tribute was, was the, I guess, the group who was working on this, there were some development issues or concerns they had. Do you anticipate those same development issues perhaps happening with Cassinger for the site, or have those, whatever those were, do you think those have been resolved?
I think they've been resolved. I think the fact that this proposal comes back with the additional market rate units and additional floor that kind of helps pay for or assist in the development of the affordable units, really helps make the deal, or the proposal work out. Thank you.
Any other questions? This, this one also has made its way through the HCD Subcommittee, so council members have had an opportunity to kind of hear, hear in more detail about this project. Okay, so I will need a motion before I can take any comment on it.
I move to approve the revised development proposal for city-owned property at 360 Hilliard Avenue for an 86-unit rental community with 34 affordable units, including a new Housing Trust Fund loan and a new land use incentive grant.
Do you feel satisfied with this motion?
If you could, if you could just specify that that includes all three portions listed on the agenda and all associated documents.
Which includes all three portions listed in the agenda and all associated documents.
I'm satisfied, Mayor.
Second.
All right. Okay, is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve items C, 1, 2, and 3? Okay, if not, do, any comments before, you have comments?
Yes.
Before we vote?
We, we had this project come through Housing and Community Development, and I am, I'm not going to be supportive of this project. I am not completely confident of the developer's ability to make this project work or happen. This is the fourth iteration of this project, this is the third under this developer, and I am not confident selling city land to this developer at this point in time. So I will not be supporting this project. There are some other aspects of the project, throughout the different iterations that I thought were very good. Without question, I don't believe that this is a bad plan. I think all the previous plans from this developer were also good plans, but I do not have confidence in this developer to see this through, so I will not be supporting this project tonight.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we are to new business, board-
And actually, before, can we do one thing? Deborah, can, can we talk about Paul's new position?
Oh, is this a highlight moment?
Yes, it's a highlight moment.
Yeah, I'm pleased to announce that-
Kathy Ball, Assistant City Manager.
Kathy Ball, Assistant City Manager. Pleased to announce that Paul has been promoted to Community Development Program Director. So that is newly popped up the press, so. Oh, sorry. He said we turned up the heat when he got this job, then had to do three presentations, so he did a great job.
But you got through it.
You passed, you passed your test, that was the test, Paul.
Right, right.
Very well deserved.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, we are-
And we didn't mean to clap, that's no lie.
Sorry, yeah, here we are, breaking our rules. We have a new business, boards and commissions, and I'll hand this over to the vice mayor.
Great. So for the African-American Heritage Commission, the boards and commissions would move to reappoint Antoinette Mosley. That's, sec, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Citizens Police Advisory Commission, the boards and commissions recommends the reappointment of Shawna McDowell and the appointment of Gretchen Gudites. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Civic Center Commission, the boards and commissions recommends that the reappointment of Bill Jones. All those, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Civil Service Board, the boards and commissions recommends using the approval that you, that council just had tonight on to add a third term for Carol Goines on the Civil Service Board, and to re, and to reappoint Carter Webb for his, for a second term. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Historic Resources Commission, the boards and commissions recommends the reappointment of Craig Klein and the appointment of Gordon McKinney. All, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're okay. The Human Relations Commission, we would recommend the reappointment of, why don't I have this on my, hold on just a second here, Dolores Venable and Anne Green.
Maggie knows, do you have it, Maggie?
If I can, I think there's one more, I can count that.
Hold on.
No, I apologize, there's two.
Right, so Ms. Green and Ms. Venable to reappoint, and to appoint Betty Council, Isaiah Green, Danielle Martin, and if I'm massacring this first name, help me, Neva Orena, and Tanya Rodriguez. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Multimodal Transportation Commission, we would request that these appointments be re-advertised, including a review by Multimodal so that they can make recommendations. I don't need a motion on that. The Neighborhood Advisory Committee, we would recommend the reappointment of Anna Sexton and the appointment of Greta Bush and Babette Mays. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and for the Public Art and Cultural Commission, we would recommend the appointment of Pete Perez. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. We have lots of people signed up for public comment, I thought you were giving me another option. So for public comment, the way it works is you, when I call your name, you'll have three minutes to speak, and green means go, orange means getting close to stop, and red means stop. I do have a number of people signed up, but if you didn't sign up, that's okay, when I get to the end of these, I'll just let people raise their hand and call them. Public comment is to be regarding topics that were not on the agenda. The first item, the first person to sign up is Reed Thompson. Okay, I don't see Reed, but I'll hold this in case he comes later. The next person is Karen Kink, I think it says?
Sikkink?
Yeah, Sikkink. Oh, Sikkink. David Sikkink?
Campkin.
Okay. John Kirkpatrick?
I'm sorry, my time is John Fife, please.
Okay. And then Tom Artema, same, same? Yes. Liz Aldera?
Yes.
Okay.
It's John Fife.
Oh, okay, okay. Karen McNeil?
Hi, Dan. So my name is Karen McNeil, good evening. I'm here to read the petition. Over 750 people from our community signed in favor of an urban forester. Please just keep this community support in mind with future plans. Mayor, city council, and city manager, please listen to the concerned citizens in our community calling for urgent action to include the position of urban forester in the 2019-2020 Asheville City Budget. In the last 10 years, we have lost about 10%, 1,600 acres of our tree canopy in Asheville City Limits. This is an unsustainable loss, we simply cannot keep losing our trees at this rate. Our tree canopy helps provide cleaner air, cleaner water, lower utility cost, carbon sequestration, reduced flooding and stormwater, and enhanced overall well-being for our community. Our beautiful green landscape has been one of the main reasons people come to visit Asheville and why the people who live here choose to stay. The most important action we can take to protect our vulnerable trees is to include an urban forester on Asheville City Staff. In the public works portion of our 2019-2020 Budget, we have allocated funds for 20 additional paid positions. We need to act now and earmark the necessary portion of those funded positions and estimate it $104,000 for an urban forester, including salary, equipment, and office supplies. Funds could also be pulled from revitalization of storm drainage infrastructure, since protecting our trees will help mitigate stormwater runoff. We as a community must creatively problem-solve, manage and prioritize the protection and replacement of our trees. They simply cannot protect themselves, and they are literally disappearing. We are asking Asheville City Council and City Manager Deborah Campbell to please take urgent action and include the position of urban forester in the 2019-2020 Budget. Over 750 people have signed our petition since June 2nd to support including an urban forester on city staff. An urban forester would manage our trees in ways that add significant value to our urban infrastructure. An arborist is trained in the cultivation and management of individual trees, these are two very different jobs and skill sets. We are not just trying to save our trees, we are saying we want to put our trees to work because they are simply the most cost-effective way to address serious issues facing our city, like stormwater runoff, air pollution, erosion, and the list goes on. We must start valuing our trees as allies for all the ways they help us. We know our city's growth is necessary and inevitable, but it must be more sensible growth. We must put more care into our community we are creating today for the next generation of Asheville citizens. Please take a few moments to read the comments included with the petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I hand this to you?
Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Michael Stratton. Hey Maggie, that buzzer's about to go.
It's happened last time.
Yeah.
I just, I'll make this brief, I just wanted to say thank you to the city of Asheville for allowing the Asheville Half Marathon and 10K to happen this weekend. It was wonderful, it was really nice that we were able to put pedestrians in front of, you know, cars for a little while, not, well, figuratively, obviously. That was really nice, it was phenomenal to see our beautiful city from the pace of a runner, and not have to worry about getting hit by a car when we were, you know, going down the street, and kudos to the APD to help us out with that, that was phenomenal. So I just want to say thank you for that, and I also wanted to say a special thanks to Councilman Haynes. Last time I was up here, I'd asked all of you guys to be bold and reevaluate this TDA money. I don't know if we all saw the paper this week, but it was $25.1 million that was raised by the TDA occupancy taxes that were collected, and that's, you know, much higher than it was last year, much higher than it was the year before. It keeps going up, and I really appreciate the words in the comments that you'd made to the paper. I think within the community, there's a lot of folks that are starting to look at this massive amount of money and say, what can we do with it? We've talked about, you know, this appropriations and how we're going to spend money and these shortcomings, and it's, it's pretty easy, I mean, there it is, go get it, let's have it.
Well, okay, so just to clarify, so it's not confusing for the public, it is dictated by the legislature.
It is.
So caveat.
Yes, yes.
There it is, go get it, go to the legislature.
Yes, huge caveat, and let me, let me be very clear, what I'm asking you is to be bold, go to Raleigh, knock on their door, pound on their door, and tell them that the city of Asheville wants our money. So that's, that's it, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Perry Phillips?
Um, uh-
Okay. Glenda Tranthen. James Phillips? James Phillips.
John Miles.
John, you should have signed up at the beginning of this. Jennifer Jacobs.
I yield to John Miles.
Okay. Michael Evans.
Two by five, John Miles.
Ten minutes.
Okay, John Miles. All right.
We didn't think you'd ever get to us.
On my count, I'm good for the next 45 minutes.
I thank those kind former coworkers and colleagues and Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a, it's a pleasure to always come before you and address you. There's a matter of great importance and frankly urgency I want to speak about tonight. I retired from this organization 14 years ago, 2005, following a 30-year career. The new city manager will, the picture's all around your office. I assume they're still there. By the time I left, I'd had the pleasure of serving under every city manager in the city's history except two. And that wasn't because I'm as old as people think I am. It's just the way it worked. But we saw some fascinating things over those years. My first two decades involved a tremendous amount of work on the parts of mayors, councils, managers, and myself and other staff to deal with a lot of pension issues. Back in those days, in the late 70s, the city had multiple different retirement systems for different groups of people that yielded different benefits, and they were all self-funded and self-administered. The red ink was horrific. You can just imagine. Over time, and slowly, starting first, I believe, if my memory is correct, firefighters, later on general non-law enforcement and non-firefighter employees, and then lastly, Asheville police officers, were all eventually merged into the local government employees' retirement system. It was probably one of the best moves the city ever invested time, money, and effort in. When you retire, there are a number of things that happen. One is you get used to a much lower income, but hopefully you've planned well over the course of your life to live on less money. I did not do such a good job. One of the things you're offered is the chance to contribute $2.90 per month to a state association of retired government workers that supposedly looks out for our benefit with the state. That has failed us miserably. Of the five officers and 15 board members that are representatives for us, all but four are state employees, retirees, or teachers. The numbers don't add up. Local government retirees right now total 70,500 people drawing a benefit from the state from Murphy to Matio. Or, yes. Those people are the heart and soul of the communities that they served in. We are the second-largest number of retirees and contributing members to our retirement system in the state of North Carolina, but only four people sit on that advisory board. Since I retired 14 years ago, we have seen one cost of living adjustment in 14 years. One. And it was for 1/10 of 1%. Now, quite honestly, during the Depression, and I have a tendency to call things as they are, it wasn't a recession, it was a depression we suffered through for the last eight or 10 years, and it is largely behind us now, we, including myself, didn't expect much in the way of an increase. The investment portfolio of those funds tanked miserably, but they have rebuilt. Let me share with you some, some further history that's more current. A year ago, former Chief Anna Reno and I, at the invitation of CBO, went and spoke to a breakfast meeting where a state senator, who shall remain nameless, I'm not here to embarrass people, but I'm going to tell the truth, was to speak. And we wanted to address our concern that others were coming to us with about pensions and low benefits. The senator heard us. He introduced us at the end of the meeting to his assistant, a very nice young lady. All kinds of business cards and good intentions were exchanged. And the senator told me, this was on a Friday morning, "I'm going back to Raleigh tonight for the only reason but I have a meeting in my office tomorrow morning on Saturday with the state treasurer, and I'm going to put this at the top of my agenda. We will be following up with you." That was in October. By December, after multiple phone calls and emails between the chief and I and that person and the staff, crickets. Never a word. So I started to dig a bit deeper. And what I found is that state association was a good bit of help. One of those four representatives for local government retirees is a former county employee, Mr. Ed Sheary. Some of you may remember Ed retired as director of the Buncombe County Library Association, or Library. He was a huge help. What we found out was 10 years ago, the legislature did one, and Mayor, I know you and I might disagree on this one point. If we, if we sat down and talked about the stupidest things Raleigh ever did, this is now mine. You may have others. The legislature decided in their infant wisdom that, well, we don't have money in LGERS. It's all city and county and employee contributions. And we therefore have no dog in this race. We're just going to quit acting every year on whether or not to give a COLA to these people, and we'll just let the state treasurer run this thing. Now, I'm not going to mention his name. Frankly, I don't want to give him any notoriety. He whose name cannot be mentioned for me. If this guy's telling the state association what I'm told he's telling them, it's absurd. Among the myths we've been told is that cities and counties would have to contribute a greater share of their payroll to afford a cost of living increase, and they're not willing to. Well, I immediately suspected he hadn't talked to any of you, or probably anybody else in the state, but that was the statement. Come to find out, Barbara Whitehorn, and I want to thank her profusely, along with Vice Mayor Whistler and Vijay for returning my calls recently, Barbara was out of town and quite ill, but responded to me and gave me some information. What the association says the official line is, is quite wrong. You have been seeing annual increases to your budget for COLA, or for contributions to LGERS from 2015 and forward every single year, including one on this year's budget that's a full 1% and 1.4% greater than, than in the past. The truth is, the treasurer's taking your money and money from cities and counties all over the state, and we're seeing nothing. But that was one excuse. The next excuse was that the League of Minus Palis and the County Association of Managers have all agreed that it's not fiscally responsible to give a raise right now, nor in the foreseeable future. And therefore, supposedly speaking on your behalf, they've all agreed not to expect one. I won't have to tell you how absurd that is. The State Retirement Association, that I keep mentioning, did a white paper. You've got copies of all this. Maggie was kind enough to take that and send it to you. The average retiree in the state of North Carolina under LGERS earns $17,000 and change per year. The people that sit behind me and others of those 70,500 statewide never saw $15 an hour in their careers. I remember one city manager that marginally made more than that when he left in the 1980s. These numbers are pathetic. The adding insult to injury, the legislature continues to appropriate periodic COLAs over the last 14 years to state retirees and to teachers every time they get on the bus and go to Raleigh, apparently. That's our problem. We don't have anybody charter a bus for us. Everybody's getting money but us. Now, here was the last insult from the state treasurer. We were told through the association that the fund balance has not increased enough to warrant a raise, and he doesn't see one until it's at 100% funding. I dare say it is a mathematical impossibility for a pension fund to ever achieve 100% funding. In the best years the state ever saw with our fund, it was at 97% and 98% when I worked here. And those were the envy of every state in the country. They used to call my office upstairs and say, how do you people have a retirement fund that robust from California and those places? We got down into the 80 percentile range. It is now back at 94.16%. The state and teachers retire fund is at 89%, but they got COLAs last year. I want a couple of things from the council. Let me narrow it down quickly. The truth is, I think what, what the problem boils down to is abrogation. The textbook definition dictionary defines that as to evade a responsibility or duty. I don't think the City of Asheville evaded a responsibility or duty when it folded this into LGERS. The councils before you and the managers before you thought we were going to be well-cared-for. Hasn't happened. The legislature abrogated its responsibility to a state treasurer who answers to nobody, and I'll point out the state treasurer's retirement is through the state system. He doesn't care what we get. And then further, the treasurer dumps on LG, on the league and the county association of managers. It's a circle. Nobody's doing anything. I think there are four possibilities. One, the state's estimates are LGERS retirees and new tenants have lost about 13% of their income in the last 10 years to inflation. The white paper that the associate, or that the, our association came up with shows it's 16%. I contend it is considerably more, around 25. Perhaps the council will consider giving us a 25% reduction on our property taxes and water bills going forward. That's an option. And the last two, and I'll be quiet. The council could appropriate some money. The cost of one bicycle lane would probably give a one-time cost of living adjustment, not calculated and as part of a base benefit, to the people that protected you and picked up the dead people off the street and provided first aid treatment and paved your streets and picked up your trash to keep us all from dying in our own filth. That's a possibility. Another is to take a stand. Pick up the phone. Mayor, I assure you, if you've never met the treasurer, he would take your call. Take a stand. Tell these people you're tired of us not seeing anything. And lastly, I prepared a draft resolution that Maggie has. I know you are all quite capable of writing resolutions. I wrote a few hundred in my career. And we have prepared one, or I have, and just it's a template for your consideration. With that, I will stop and ask if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just in anticipation, because John did email all of us, we do have some information about this from, from Barbara's office, just about how this funding works and what our role is in it. And there, and that is correct. The cities across the state were asked to increase their contribution this year to LGERS, the retirement fund for local employee, retired local employees, local government employees. And our increase is estimated to be at about, our increased contribution, so the over and above what we would normally contribute is estimated at about $825,000 annually for the next three years, this year being our first year in this, in this increase. And it's, and as John mentioned, apparently the decision about whether or not to do a COLA increase rests with this 13-member Board of Trustees, LGERS Board of Trustees, which has nine appointments by the governor, one by the state senate, and one by the House of Representatives, and the state treasurer and state superintendent, who serve as ex officio members, I guess. That's the state treasurer's involvement. So we did get some information about it. I do appreciate, and I know we all do, that you all made the effort to come down here today and talk to us about it. So, thank you. And I hear your recommendations.
Do we have a, a process to consider any of those recommendations about what we might do, either finance committee or governance or something?
I would offer that, that finance because you wrapped in HR.
What a surprise, surprise.
Well, you were just trying to give governance, I was going to question.
How come it never goes to governor?
That would probably be the best place to consider the options and have a little more time to work, work through it.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like if the, if the problem is somewhere in Raleigh, in some office or some building or with some group of people or some person, you know, making our voice heard on that front would be at least an easy thing we could do. So.
Okay. The next person, so finance. Yes, okay. The next person signed up to speak is Ryan Schultz.
Wait, you know that.
Schultz. Maybe I'm saying the last name.
Can I get four minutes or no?
It's three minutes.
I can't get my point across in three minutes, so.
Super.
If it's, I can't.
That's our rule, three minutes.
I mean, it's, it's, I'm going to give you ways to make more money for the city coming from another state.
It's three minutes. If you have your comments in writing, you can give them to Maggie and she'll pass them around, or you can always email us as well.
I've emailed everybody on this board, and not one person has replied to me in the last three months.
Okay.
I've emailed three times over the last three months. So that's why I came to this meeting today. Flew here from another state to come to this meeting. So can I have four minutes?
No, you can have three minutes. I'm sorry that.
You can cut me off then whenever my three minutes is up. I'm here about three topics. I lived in Asheville from 2000 to 2003. I left because I was making 600 every two weeks and could not afford to live here. Fast forward to 2016, still no jobs in Asheville. I've built a successful business in another state, and I travel back and forth to work. I decided I wanted to escape the big city that I live in, which is 1.5 million people in my county. So I started house hunting here, came across the Airbnb ordinance. So when I was up here house hunting, I decided to stay outside the city limits because I could not get a private Airbnb within the city limits. The Airbnb rules appear to be written by a hotel lobbyist, which brings me to my first point. The Airbnb rules that you guys have put into place not only hurts property owners, but hurts workers. At my other home, I have a thousand-square-foot guest house. In 2018, I made over $30,000 in rent in nine months of renting out my property. On top of the extra income, the guests paid vacationer's tax, which directly went to the jurisdiction in which I live. Just on my property alone, the jurisdiction collected $4,000 in vacationer's tax, which is 13% of my pay of what I made on my, my property. Not only did the, did the city get the 4,000, but the economic impact to local restaurants, car rentals, airport grocery, et cetera. Next topic is roads. I have finally purchased my home on Sunset Mountain, spent over $1 million. I've been there two years, and the roads have drastically deteriorated. Currently, I can see down four levels of pavement, pavement in 10 different potholes in front of my home. There are chunks coming out of the street that are bigger than my fist, and this street is touted as a bike-friendly path. I pay nearly $10,000 in property taxes. I should have safe access to my house, and currently I don't. People swerve around these potholes into oncoming traffic on a daily basis. I complained in 2018 and was told I would be on the paving schedule for this year, but now with the landslide up top, we're being told that we don't know if we're still going to be paved. Which brings me to my last topic, which is the Charlotte Street Road Diet. If there's money to be blown on making Charlotte Street worse than it already is, then why isn't there money to fix the roads for the people who live here? I travel Charlotte Street two times a day with city buses, ghost tours, and lost tourists trying to get to Grove Park. Traffic is thick. Charlotte is a main, Charlotte is a main cut-through for North Asheville to the South Slope, including myself. Shrinking Charlotte Street would be an absolute disaster, not only for North Asheville, but a waste of money for the city, when you hear so many reasons that we need more money, including the people who have retired, in which I left the job that these people are talking about. I beg you to drive down Charlotte Street at 5:00 PM and see the lines of cars waiting, two lanes each way. Making it one lane would create gridlock. It would, it would also keep, and we keep allowing new buildings and neighborhoods in North Asheville, which means more cars. I'm a runner, I'm a biker, but I'm also a driver and a realist. And if this project goes through, the city will regret the decision for years. You cause people to cut through quiet neighborhoods in speed when they are upset about sitting in traffic. I know this because it's my reality when I'm back home in Florida, which is why I opted to buy a second home out of the rat race. Instead of heading into Asheville to eat in the evenings, I will be heading into Woodfin or somewhere else. And I think that you need to put the residents first instead of the tourists. After all, the residents are what make this city great.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, I do, I do see your email from yesterday. I do not have any other emails from you, but if you, I don't know if they got lost or.
I don't either. I just checked as well, so.
Yeah. I have one from yesterday, but.
2018, January of this year.
I've got every email, yeah. We, ours don't ever get deleted. They only get archived, so.
I have five seconds.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Matilda Bliss.
Wrote these out tonight. My name is Matilda. I'm a member of Asheville Showing Up for Racial Justice, and I'm speaking for myself. I can't help but think that had we had elections to look forward to this year, this budget vote would have looked much different. As a committed member of my community, I will fight for economic, racial, and environmental justice. And this budget has taught me that many of us have yet to make the alliances that are needed. But I and many others, I think, acknowledge we have friends in this This budget, on a high-revenue year, is a cut-and-run. We hear you. We hear your priorities. They are not ours. And I look forward to work, to working further with better buses together, and I look forward to making new friends. We are rising up. We are making connections. And we are not sorry. We are rising up, we are making connections, and we are not sorry for having these concerns. We will hold you accountable for these votes, especially if mid-season assurances don't pan out. Transit can't wait. Our elections can't wait. Your reelections are expendable. Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Sarah Benoit.
I'm being Benoit, I'm sorry.
Gosh, I got that right last time, and then I messed it up this time, I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. As usual, I'm really grateful to have my time here at City Council, so thank you all for being here. I will just echo some of the comments already made. I'm disappointed in the final budget, and I believe it lacks some fundamental things that our community, especially our working class, really needs. But I will say I do appreciate that you're not shying away from everyone's disappointment. And I know I'm going to continue to be here every Tuesday, that I can possibly do it when I'm not working, and to make sure that in the next twelve months, the issues that you've said are going to be given attention are given attention, and that you follow through on the things that you said you're going to do. The most important issue that I'm here for tonight, and most of you have seen me here before, is I really just want to talk again about the forced changes to our voting districts that the state is planning to impose on us. First, I want to say really deeply from my heart how much I appreciate that Councilman Brian Haines, Councilman Keith Young, and Councilwoman Shanika Smith all wrote an editorial in the Asheville Citizen Times about how important it is for Asheville to fight gerrymandering and to protect fair elections. It means a great deal to a large number of us that people are speaking out against it. To everyone else, I really want to urge you to join these three people on City Council in taking a stand against this, not just for Asheville, but for North Carolina. As I've traveled the state, I have found that where we live is being torn apart by gerrymandering. It is hurting people on multiple levels in our state, people from all walks of life, and there are now Republicans and Democrats alike that believe our democracy in North Carolina is truly being threatened, and that we are setting a tone for our entire country. And I feel like as local government, we have to start understanding the role that we play in that bigger picture. Now is really not the time to say that nothing can be done. To me, what we lose if these changes to our voting districts go through is the very heart of what makes our democratic system livable for a lot of us that are part of minority communities. At-large elections in our city are incredibly important to preserving the integrity of our community. I'm really going to urge all of you to take a stand against this. I don't want to see the light of our democracy in North Carolina fade more than it already has, and even if we think that we can't stand up to the state, I'm just going to say, we all got to grow up here on this issue, right? We just got to tell them how it is. I've lived here for twenty years, typically Asheville does not back down just because Raleigh says something, so take it up a notch.
Thank you. Darlene, I can't quite read the handwriting, but will you tell me how to say your last name, please?
Good evening, it's Darlene Azarmi.
Okay, I wouldn't even.
Sorry. Good evening, y'all. I am here representing Democracy North Carolina and the Asheville Bunkham NAACP, also to talk about the districting issue. This is something that, as you know, is on people's minds right now, and rightfully should be. Just to back up a little bit, we're talking about marching orders that were given down by arguably the most racist General Assembly in the United States. Specifically in Asheville, in 2015, when we had a black representative elected to council, there was an immediate plan put into play, and this is a part of a greater strategy in North Carolina and across the nation, as you may know. We are being pounded left and right in the sector of voting rights at the state level, and it comes down to race. There's a lot of talk about partisanship, we can talk about that, and there are many lawyers on council. So it's mind-blowing to me that there has been silence this long on this issue, and we've seen these court cases in Wake County and in Greensboro pushed back, and the fact that we're still sitting here twiddling thumbs in silence, not answering emails, just not speaking on the issue. I commend the council members who have taken a stance on this issue, but the public needs to be aware, there needs to be communication, there needs to be education, forums, and a public dialogue around this issue. Because the ethical cost of simply standing by and allowing this to push over has far-reaching precedents, not just for Asheville, but for the entire nation. And this is a very, very serious issue, this might be the most serious issue facing this 2020 upcoming election, and this is really the integrity of our entire election system, the crux of all of you being able to sit in your seats and say that you're legitimately elected. So I don't think we need to go into specifics about cracking and stacking and AVBAP, the Black Votes Per Hour in Asheville. I know that there have been questions about the percentages, is, can this be a racial gerrymander if it's not five percent? We have around three-point-five percent registered African-Americans in Asheville. Regardless of all of these technical legal issues, y'all need to take a stand on this. The public needs to know where you're at, and I am asking you, and on behalf of my organizations, to fight back, and, you know, in saying that, what was the quote, is can we win in a meaningful way? What is the difference between a charter and a lawsuit? People don't know these things, and we need you to give that information, speak with a backbone, and stand firm on this issue.
Thank you. Susan Loftus.
Hi, I'm Susan Loftus, and I just wanted to thank you all for supporting the resolution to get Riverside Cemetery designated as a land of serenity. Thank you, it's very important to this community, and I thank you.
Thank you. Those are the folks I have signed up to speak, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes. Vicki, yeah.
I'm Vicki Meath, I'm a resident of West Asheville, I'm the Director of Just Economics, and I don't have prepared remarks tonight. I wanted to say, though, a couple of things, I want to make a comment, and then I want to make a request. My comment is, as most of you know, I've sat through many, many budget votes, and today I just have this overwhelming feeling of frankly just wanting to cry, and because we have been working on transit, and I think we've experienced a lot of losses, we've experienced a lot of wins, but we've experienced a lot of losses over the years, but today's vote on the budget feels like a loss to our transit riders, and it feels, it hits me a little bit harder, it's an emotional month, my kid just graduated from high school, so that might have a little bit to do with me wanting to cry, but it hits me a little bit harder because we thought it was going to be a win. We waited for a city manager that had the interest and passion and experience around transit, we waited for this transit plan, we waited for a change in the management company, we have waited for there to be funds available, and throughout this whole process, since the transit retreat in October, we've seen the reasons why we can't implement the Transit Master Plan change, from capacity to funding to funding to capacity, and so expecting a win and feeling like it's a loss to transit riders and knowing what that means is just really hitting me really hard tonight. But my request is that you all seek quarterly reports, if not monthly reports, on what is needed to get this done, to implement the last part of this Transit Master Plan. Because my neighbors, my friends, the people who are my chosen family are having trouble making ends meet and are having to pay Ubers to get home from work, and are having to turn down jobs because they don't have reliable transportation access, and that's just not okay. And I just think that, I hear you, city manager, when you're saying that, you know, we don't want to over-commit and under-deliver, but if the money's not there, there's no commitment at all. And I just feel like our transit riders have had to wait so many times, and I encourage you to keep asking the questions of like, what are we waiting for? When are we going to be satisfied that we have the capacity to follow through on this? And to make, follow through on your commitments, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hey, City Council, I'm Tim Saffler, and, you know, I kind of echo Vicki's concerns, you know, it's, I mean, ultimately such a difficult issue, funding operating costs, and, you know, I'm just really thankful that we do have limited Sunday service. I think we're only the, we're only one of a handful of small cities that actually offer some limited service, so, I mean, it's a real blessing that we have that, but of course, you know, if we had an unlimited budget, and like, I don't know, everybody could just be here, and stuff like that, that'd be great, but it's just not fairy tale fantasy land. But anyway, my main comment was, you know, I've been going to the parking garages, and I've been asking some of the people there that are contractors, you know, how much they're making, and it's pretty pathetic. They're only making like eight or nine dollars an hour, and, you know, I was kind of hoping we could do something about that. I mean, I know it's a workaround to not pay a living wage when we hire contractors or whatnot, but anyway, you know, I was just thinking that you guys might want to give that a good look this year. That's all I've got.
Not to interrupt your speaking time, I was going to add something about the contractor issue.
Oh, okay.
Just informationally, you know, the council did at one time pass a policy that all of our contractors would have to pay a living wage to their employees, and then the legislature promptly passed legislation saying no city could require that contractors pay a living wage, and we're still subject to the bidding requirements for hiring contractors, so we struggle with this issue.
Right, and I don't know, maybe there's some kind of work.
Well, the way, I mean, the ultimate way to do it is to bring all of the services in-house.
I think that would be a much better way to spend the money than, you know, just, I mean, the carbon footprint of like running buses around when there's nobody on them or whatnot, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me, but, I mean, who am I to say?
Don't forget our electric buses, but, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I would like to thank Mr. Kapoor for his courage this week in taking a stance in the approval of the district elections. It's a very unpopular thing, obviously, and taking a stance on an unpopular issue is, you know, a dicey game in a game that's all about approval. And I thank the mayor for starting to clarify the realities of our case, should we choose to sue the state for the districts that they've imposed on the city. The weakness of the case and your colorful language that you used, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the, basically, the middle finger that the three of you, Keith and Shanika and Brian, gave to authority from personal experience, I can tell you that doesn't usually work out very well. But I, you know, I appreciate the thought. Looking through the data, as Mr. Kapoor has, there is no indication whatsoever that racial gerrymandering has occurred. And I think one of the things that's been left out in the conversation, a lot of things have been left out in the conversation, in fact, this whole conversation was left out of the conversation about districts until it was actually a law. The actual gerrymandering that the North Carolina Legislature is doing in other parts of the state is effective because Democrats won't vote for Republicans, Republicans won't vote for Democrats, there's that polarity here. When it comes to racial, you know, cooperation at the voting polls, that can't be said. We don't have an electorate whereby white people will not vote for the black candidates lest you would be, you wouldn't be here. The numbers are that low in the community. And the best way to protect that dwindling number is to take advantage of the areas of town that have a higher concentration of African-American votes, thereby protecting the districts. District number two is a hundred percent in 2017 more African-American than the city at large. The very opposite of racial gerrymandering has occurred here, and I very much appreciate you bringing this data that you've put out there. I've also compiled the data, I've sent it to you, and I've sent it to you, I've sent it to the mayor, I know that you're bad with math, but I could send it to you as well. Gerrymandering is all about the numbers, it's very simple, it's very simple math, it's even Julie math.
Julie math.
It's Julie math.
We have set a goal bar.
The concentration levels of, are there to be seen. And I know that you guys were griping about the even-yeard elections, that's a ship that has sailed, and once again, that was not something that the legislature imposed on us, that was a request that the mayor made to be considered as a part of this amendment, as amendment to that bill, she made the request, Terry Van Dyne wrote the amendment, and a hundred percent of the Senate voted on this. So I appreciate that there's more conversation about this. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak on this, during public comment? Yes.
My name is Jan Howard Kubinek, and I came to cede my time to Jonathan, but I am here now, and I also am on the verge of tears, and I don't know if you know, that police arrested Reed Thompson on the sidewalk today. I just, Reed and I are sort of the refugees of a previous administration that really messed up. Can't something be done? I live day in and day out in a similar situation when Perry Alexander and Charlie Worley and numbers of prominent people decided to take my driveway. So day in and day out, I fight with it, and people are horrible to me, and access to my house is almost impossible. Now Reed came in on the same UDO plan with the previous, one of the previous mayors, but he just was arrested for being on the sidewalk. So, anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, just as an impromptu addition here at the end of our council meeting, there has been a lot of talk about districts, the district election bill, bills, actually plural, and we've had a lot of public outward sort of discussion about it, and this council has actually been briefed on it many, many times at our request in closed session by legal counsel. Just backing up on this, for people to recall, this was a two-part process, there was a bill that was introduced by Senator, former Senator Apodaca, long, long ago, actually, I guess it was a three or four-part process, which failed in one of the most epic floor debates I've ever heard in my life, and the legislature on his last day as a senator, and I remember it was the last day of the session, and it happened on a Friday afternoon, and it took about three hours, and it went up in flames, but not because anybody loved Asheville, it was actually the, sort of a House-Senate fight, really. And then when Senator Edwards became the senator out of Henderson County, also representing part of Southern Bunkham County, he picked up that torch and ran with it. I personally, and other council members as well, I have met with Senator Edwards on multiple occasions, I have asked him, I asked him not to pass this bill, I went down to Raleigh, others have been down to Raleigh as well, I've met with Senator Edwards up here, but despite all that conversation, he still introduced the bill. The bill, when it was originally introduced, the first bill, took away the first bill, took away Asheville's right to amend its own charter. Cities are allowed to amend their charters to do certain things, very limited things, but one of them is whether or not to have districts and some other things you get to pick, like the form of your election, whether it's a plurality, or a partisan, or a nonpartisan, or it has a primary or not. And in the end, what they decided to do at the legislature was require Asheville to draw its own districts by a certain deadline, or they would enact another piece of legislation imposing districts on Asheville. In the interim, this council voted to put a referendum on the ballot asking people whether or not they wanted districts. Because we needed a way also to get the community's voice heard in this conversation. And it overwhelmingly failed. The community, I think it was something like 76% or something, a very high number, did not want districts. So, we waited to see whether or not, because at that point, we had no districts. And then the legislature ultimately passed legislation imposing districts on Asheville, but it did not include this removal of our right to amend our own charter. Because in the meantime, I'm assuming, because the Greensboro litigation happened, and in Greensboro, the court said, because Greensboro's right to amend its charter had been removed, it was a violation of the U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, equal protection clause. Lawyers have been a little hesitant to rest all of their hopes on that case because it wasn't actually defended. The state did not make an appearance in the case. So, there's a little bit of, you know, question about whether that will stand. But that is the law right now. So, the legislature took out that prohibition, if you will. So, as far as I know, we are the first local government, whether it's a school district, or county, or city. Mind you, when districts were imposed on Buncombe County, they were preempted from changing their districts for a period of 20 years. There was never a lawsuit about it. So, that happened years ago. But as far as I know, we would be the first, we're the first situation where the legislature did not remove the right to amend our own charter. So, you know, this is a, I don't know if there's anything more chicken and egg than this situation because, you know, it's hard to know what will happen. So, I've tried to make the rounds, talk to council, and see what we want to do. My sense is that a majority of council, and Vijay's put out his opinion, but a majority of council would like to move forward with taking action. The question is, what is the appropriate action? Because we have a couple of options that the public hasn't had a chance to hear about, other than me trying my best to describe it on Facebook, which I'll offer is not really the best way. And Joel, you did a pretty good job with your article, although still pretty confusing, I would have to say. But, you know, those are the confines of the newspaper. So, what I think we'd like to do is have this heard in the Governance Subcommittee, have our city attorney come and explain the options we have, and then, and let the public hear them, comment on them, weigh in, and then have it come back to council for a vote to direct the city attorney to take action. At that point, we can choose. You've heard a lot about, should there be a lawsuit? Should there be a charter amendment? Should there be both? Should there be neither? I mean, these are all the things that we'll need to lay on the table. And, you know, some things to consider in this conversation are, you know, what can you address through which means? So, we have elections in even years. We have, the form of our election has been changed to a plurality with no primary, which is one of the four options allowed for cities. That change was a surprise to me, and I think everybody. I came as a floor amendment by former Representative Brawley when the bill was being debated in the House. I, you know, I don't know what the thinking was there. Some people thought it was a mistake, but it frankly looked pretty deliberate to me. But, you know, those are the, some of these things can be managed through a charter amendment. Some of these things could also maybe be addressed in a lawsuit. And we need an opportunity to put it all out there, have this discussion, and then figure out what the best way is to proceed. And somewhat swiftly, because, you know, while I think there is not an opportunity to beat the clock on an election for 2019, nor is it clear to me that there is a way to change that. But if we were to try to hopefully restore a primary in the election process, I believe the filing for all candidates for the next cycle's in December. So, that would be, you know, pretty much a drop-dead deadline there. Okay, so unless there's any objection, or, and feel free to make a comment, I would recommend that we send this to Governance, and Brad will prepare, and maybe our council. We do have attorneys that specialize in election law, I believe, are out of Raleigh. I have also, just personally, when we were without an attorney, I personally spent quite a bit of time on the phone with the School of Government Attorneys at Chapel Hill who specialize in election law to kind of walk through what our options are. That was very helpful for me. But, and I think we just need an opportunity for people to hear what those choices are. So, the Governance Committee is scheduled to take place on August 9, which is not a council day, but it is a day we can meet as a Governance Committee. Wait, I'm saying that wrong? I mean July, I mean July 9. Yes. I'm sorry. No, 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 yeah.
And Mayor, would other council members who are not on that committee be able to participate as well?
As a public?
Yeah, right. Can attend and comment.
What time and where does the Governance Committee meet?
Governance meets on the first floor of this building, although we can move it up here, I guess, if it were to be a big audience. And it meets at 3:00 on Tuesday the 9, which would normally be a council day, but that is our summer break from council meeting day. But it's not our summer break from Subcommittee Meeting Day.
The only I have to ask is, you know, I understand, and I have no issue with that. I think it's important for us to do that. Given the importance of this, I would ask that if other council members would be able to participate, not in the voting capacity, but in the ability to ask questions of any witnesses or any other things. That would be important, other than just kind of having the opportunity to speak in a public comment, just for the invocation of everybody, so we don't have to rehash it when it comes to the full council.
I don't know about witnesses, but, I mean, people that's been...
That's what, excuse me, I didn't mean to say that. But in terms of anyone who, anyone who would be providing us information, whether it's a city attorney, or if we decide to bring in anyone from the outside.
I just recommend a time change from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Is that all right? I don't have problem with that. Okay, Governance at 5:00 p.m. Okay. And, you know, and we may, we may think about moving in here. We are live-streaming Governance Committee meetings, but it's a little bit harder to find it, I think, for people than having to meet in here.
I'd say just yes.
I'm sorry.
May I say yes?
Just go ahead and move it here? Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions? We do not have a closed session tonight. All right, we are adjourned.